It is seven o'clock and I'd like to call the order of the Novi Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Shall we stand, rise, say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the Secretary to do the roll call.
Trustee Bartlett?
Here.
Trustee Bart?
Here.
Trustee Crawford?
Here.
Trustee Julie, I'm here. Trustee Galoufu is Assistant Fu's Trustee Helengas.
Here.
And Trustee Sturrie?
Here.
Student Representative DeMoor?
Here.
And Deor Mala?
Here.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. We have the agenda in front of us as presented. Any comments? If not, any other kind of motion, approve it?
So move.
Seconded.
Seconded, yeah, okay. Would you call the vote?
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Julie, I say yes. Trustee Helengas?
Yes.
And Trustee Sturrie?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Good. Next item is the consent agenda. That would be to approve the minutes of April 25, 2024, regular board meeting, as well as the claims and warrants of accounts 271 and 272 on pages 10 through 12 of our booklet.
Move to approve.
Second.
Then move and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Secretary, would you call the vote?
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
I say yes.
Yes.
Trustee Helengas?
Yes.
Trustee Sturrie?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
We have no presentations tonight. This is an opportunity for the public to comment. In order to hear all citizens' comments, at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that the speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session. However, it is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address.
They're laying down.
I see nobody in the audience running to the podium, so I take it there's no public comment at this point. Reports. Let's start with the student representative report, pages 13 through 15 in our booklet.
The Club Half-Loud Program was held on April 4th. This event was for all fans of Greek mythology, monsters and mayhem. Those loving Percy Jackson joined our multi-club for book talks, snacks, games and crafts inspired by the books. Attendance was 14. The Emoji Portrait Event was held on April 10th. Teens joined us at the library in creating an emoji portrait. They picked their favorite emoji and turned it into art. Attendance was 10. Chinese Culture Handicrafts Program was held on April 13th. This event involved creating Chinese cultural handicrafts. Teens and teens created Chinese paper cuttings. The art of Chinese paper cutting is a treasure traditional art dating back to when paper was developed. These elaborate cutting designs are created with scissors or artwork knives and can include a variety of shapes such as symbols and animals. Attendance was 31. The Novi Chess Club All-Skills Level Program was held on April 18th. This event provides an opportunity for teens and tweens to participate in games, learn about chess and sharpen their skills. Attendance was 21. The SAT Practice Test Program was held on April 27th. This practice test was provided by college tutors and was available to high school students only. Students took a practice SAT to familiarize themselves with the format of the exam and to help identify their strengths and weaknesses. Thank you to college tutors for their educational sponsorship to offer these free SAT practice tests to our teen community. Attendance was 18. A Teen Space update. So during April 2024, there were 813 guests visiting Teen Space. The total weekly Teen Space stats for April 2024 were April 1st to April 5th, 216 visitors. April 8th to April 12th, 188 visitors. April 15th to April 19th, 150 visitors. April 22nd to April 26th, 169 visitors. April 29th and 30th, 90 visitors. Teen Space was not in session for the following dates, April 11th and April 16th for PSAT testing at Novi High School. This is a good month for Teen Space. Animal crackers were given out on Friday, April 12th to celebrate National Animal Cracker Day. On Thursday, April 18th, Taylor, Youth and Teen Programming Assistant, helped me, helped Aiden Palmer plan and host a party in Teen Space that they loved. We had lots of different snacks, diamond painting, which we've had teens asking about almost every day since, and music. Everything has been going well and I look forward to our next, last full month of Teen Space, which is this month of May. Though I'm sad it's almost over.
As for the Teen Advisory Board update, the eighth TAN meeting of the year was held on April 12th. Officer elections are approaching, so at this meeting, returning officers gave a small speech describing their position as an officer. This way, attendees have an idea of what positions they can run for in the May elections. Additionally, members made posters of some of their favorite books to recommend to others in the teen staff. Picture below are some of the posters. Our attendance was nine. In terms of upcoming programs, Teen Space will be held Monday through Friday until June 6th, and it will resume again in the fall. Our summer reading program begins on Monday, June 3rd and ends on Saturday, August 10th. The Club Half-Loud Program will be held on June 6th for grades four to eight from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. The Summer Reading Kickoff Party for all ages will be held on June 9th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The Novi Chess Club ages five and up will be held on June 20th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And our Magnificent Maple Presentation with Thorn Applewood Land for grades four through 12 will be held on June 26th from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. In honor of National Poetry Month, the April Teen Stop Display featured poetry and novels in verse.
Thank you. Any questions for our teen representatives or report?
Are you excited that school is almost done? Well, enjoy your summer and congratulations. You're welcome.
We'll still see you, but let us know if you have conferences up, because I know this is also your summer vacation. But hopefully we'll see you in June, July. And also, our student reps will be queuing up for their end-of-the-year presentation. They usually make that in July. I know that Mrs. Guo Chi is working with the students and will, but you can plan for July for them to be presenting to you kind of an overview of the year and how the year went with teen program. So we look forward to seeing you then as well. Good luck at finals.
Yes, good luck.
No finals at Novi, actually.
Just lots of progress.
Good luck at contests.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. What I want to report on today, I announced, I think, at the last meeting, who all the committee members were, but it's now printed out and it's on, good question, it's on page 17 in our handout. Let me know if that is not what your understanding is, but I think that's final accurate committee's membership. The other thing that I would like to mention is that two weeks ago, Julie and I had the honor of attending a Friends meeting. And it's always nice to go to the Friends meeting and thank them for all the wonderful things that they do for us. But we had a little discussion about large donations. And as you're aware, we have this operating agreement or memorandum of understanding with the Friends that we had, we have, and we renew every year or every two years. We're talking about an insert in this memorandum of, this operate, we're not calling it an operating agreement. We used to call it a memorandum of agreement. Now it's an operating agreement. But we're talking, we put in a provision for large donations so that if someone approaches the Friends to make a donation, that we would get together between the board and the Friends to acknowledge the donation, acknowledge the wish of the donor, if, if they insist that it be used in a particular way. There's an advantage for people to make donations to the Friends because they're 501(c), and that may facilitate some of their, just their wishes because they want to donate money to the Friends. But it may also facilitate them, if they have to do some minimum distributions from their IRAs, that there's a way to make a donation that helps to meet that without being taxable to the donor, but 100% of the gift is, is considered meeting their minimum distribution requirements. And we'll be working with that more, but I anticipate that we will be soliciting and obtaining more donations that if they can donate to the Friends, acknowledge it as a 501(c), and at the same time with an agreement between the Friends and the library is how those funds will be used. So we're working on that language right now, but Julie and I discussed that a little bit with the Friends and you'll see that language later on.
You will. You'll see it for the June packet. I'll make sure that it's queued up for all of you. I'm actually sending it back to Friends for their June meeting, which is before ours. I'm, I'm guessing I'll get the vote and it'll, it'll be approved from that body and then come here as well. So just, just another way for us to be looking at opportunity for donations for people who have those specific needs based on where, how they're donating. So for now, this will serve as a great mechanism. I know we've talked about an endowment and a foundation, but this actually keeps us moving with something. If, if we can in the future, consider that opportunity of an endowment and foundation, I think we should still look at it. But this puts us in a really good framework for those donations to come in now and not have to worry about some of those questions and concerns. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that language and we'll bring it to you.
And the other thing that we mentioned, that Trustee Bartlett and myself have offered to meet with the Friends at some point, probably later on this fall, to talk in depth, if they have any questions about how this, how the process works or how it's advantageous to them to make donations that help reduce their minimum distribution requirements.
I think it'll make for a good program. I really do, to share with other community members how there's an opportunity to do that. So we'll queue up with probably having a financial person that can also be in attendance and provide that information just as guidance. We, we definitely don't want to get into selling from a certain particular company or anything, but someone being able to provide that educational information about the opportunities that someone may have if, if they have those types of investments. Thank you, Mark.
So I will open it up to, at this point, other trustees, if they had anything that happened this past month that they want to share that's maybe related to the library in some way or some activities that they've attended or they plan on attending. So I'll open it up to any of the trustees. Kathy, you were raising your hand.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
A couple of things. Wanted to tell you that we, we had a full bus for the on-the-road trip that Gail Anderson is sort of in charge of, and she chose a great tour downtown Detroit. People loved it. It was a full bus. They, they loved seeing, they went to Motown and a lot, most of the people had never been there. And they all received a book, a giant book about the history of Motown and everything. So it was really great, yeah. It was really great. And, and then they went to Mexican Village and had terrific lunch and lots of touring. So, you know, everybody should keep posted on when the next on-the-road trip is, and you better sign up quick when you see those.
It went within days. Yeah. Literally filled up within days. It wasn't even one week.
Yeah. So as soon as you see it, you know, you'll need to sign up. Also, last week, last Thursday, the Historical Commission sponsored a program on the Titanic. And the guy, I've heard this guy speak before, and he's, he's from the Potasca area, but he, he's an expert on the Titanic. He's been studying it for years. And everybody loved it. We had almost back to pre-COVID attendance. It was like 70 people, you know, in half of the room there, so it was full. And he had artifacts and things to share about it, and so we'd like to have him back again. The upcoming program that's, that's going to be wildly popular too is the History of the Detroit Coney. A lot of people know that Detroit has been famous for the Coney Dog. And so Joe Grimm is going to discuss the history of the iconic Detroit Coney Dog, Coney Dog, and that's going to be on June 10th, which is a Monday, a little bit different day than we generally do our programs. So people should, we encourage everyone to sign up, to register. There's no charge or anything, but we encourage everybody to sign up so we know how many chairs to set up and how big of the room we need. So anyway, that's, that's what's going on.
Good. Anybody else?
So through my day job, I attended a conference yesterday in Troy, and it was called Rev Up 2030. And it has to do a lot with, this particular one is on diversity, equity and inclusion. And a lot of the discussions that were involved tend to happen in the automotive world. But what was really resounding and pretty profound in terms of takeaways is that a lot of the big companies, especially around our region, are really moving forward and developing employee resource groups and processes and working on compliance. Because what they've discovered is there is actual data now proving that the more diverse voices that you bring to a table in an organization to help innovate, it actually improves output by 38%. And there's a lot of other statistics that was just like really mind-blowing for me. And just as Chair of DEI for, for the board, I just got a lot of really good nuggets and takeaways that hopefully I'll bring back to committee and we can kind of talk about it. But it was really interesting and, and they were talking about a lot of, you know, the, the debates that are happening in the public, you know, eye and things like that. But as soon as I get any of the resources, I'm happy to share them with the rest of the board and definitely Julie. But yeah, it was really eye-opening. So I really appreciated being able to go. And one more thing. Dear Asian Youth Novi, they have their Asian Festival, the API Festival coming up. I think it's on June 1st, right, Julie?
It is on Sunday, June 2nd.
June 2nd, sorry. Sunday, June 2nd, in First Park. And I unfortunately am at a tournament out of town for my son's baseball, which makes me sad. Because last year, I think, was their inaugural year and they did so amazing. So I'm really hoping that in place of me, all of you are able to go if you have time and attend. It's, it's just a wonderful thing that happens and Shannon's a huge part of it. The library is really involved, and so to have some trustee presence there at some point would be really awesome.
If I can echo that for a minute, what's amazing about this particular event is that it is literally planned by the students of the high school that are partnering with the library. But all the work is done from the students, and they are amazing. The leadership with these kids, and, and thank you, Kat, for mentioning Shannon. You know, Shannon is, is their go-to and guide, but these, these students are fantastic. First of all, drop in the library right now and see their displays just to get, just to get ready for the event. They have beautiful displays that they've created and put up. And then the event itself, and it is very well organized. You know, they're learning each year from hosting something. There were over 300 people in attendance, and, and I do believe it's going to be even bigger. And there, and they even figured out, which I think is fantastic, if there's rain and the weather's not good, it will be at the Novi High School. So they already made those accommodations if the event, you know, has that weather factor. So if you get any time during, it's one to three, I think it is. Yes. If you get any time, I will be there for a little bit, but if you get a chance, please stop by. It's, we'll be in First Park, you know, if, if all goes well. And I just think it's amazing to see these young people literally spearheading such a fantastic event. And I do agree with you. Kudos to Shannon. She is, you know, helping them coordinate and, but they, they are amazing. They are amazing students. They've been here in the past and shared. I will definitely make sure that they come back and share some information after the event, but please, if you get a chance, it's well worth it.
I think they have dances and they've expanded their programming, and there's lots of good food.
Yes, they'll have food trucks that you can buy food from, vendors, vendors and things like that. So great opportunity. Thank you, Trustee Julie. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments, trustees? If not, let's move to the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Bartlett.
Yes, if you review the Treasurer's Report, there's really not that much that has changed from the last, last report other than our run rate is, our run rate looks like we're going to end the year in fairly, in a fairly good position compared to our budget. So, because we're, right now, our run rate is just around $320,000. We will have the expenditure of the parking lot, which of course we're closed this weekend. We're just going to hit the 272 account, so just be prepared for that. And so we're in pretty good shape at this point. No real outliers that are red flags between now and the end of the year, which is in the end of June. And that's it.
If I could just echo to Trustee Bartlett, you are correct. We are doing well. If you, if you notice though, our year-end numbers that we approved in February, they were sent to the city. However, the city just approved the third quarter at Monday's meeting. So they are behind. So there's no reflection of where you made edits. Today, I had a meeting with finance to shore up the fourth quarter. And so I will be bringing you the fourth quarter and a couple adjustments in some budget lines, which are looking really good when it comes to the investments for revenue, which I'm happy to share with you. So I'll be bringing those to you for the June meeting for you to approve, because they like an approval, kind of like closing out the year. like an approval, kind of like closing out the year. So that'll be coming. Okay?
Related to maybe what you just mentioned, I I noticed that for April, there was zero in terms of interest on investment and on unrealized gain. Is that the reason those numbers are zero?
Well, you're going to see numbers now, because they're they're getting me some numbers.
Okay.
Yes. So, and and some very good ones.
Good.
Yep. Thank you. But so, yeah, you will have a very, you will have a pretty good, clear picture of the end of the year for the June's meeting with still a month, because, you know, we have the month of June. We meet in July to to finalize the year, but you'll have a good, good outlook on what what we're coming into.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Any other questions for financial report or for trustee Bartlett, treasurer? Okay. In that case, we're moving on to the Directors' Report.
All right.
To you, Julie.
We are on page thirty, and so I, we have a number of employees to recognize for June anniversaries and their years of service. Our first is Mary Gruehl, sixteen years. Mary's with our Support Services Department, and she works in our Technical Services area, which is part of the processing of materials and working with our Melcat. Then we have Lindsay Gochai, nine years. Lindsay is in our Information Services Department, and she is our Youth and Teen Services Supervisor. So she does a lot with our student reps, along with programming. Eileen Mazzarello, seven years. She's with Support Services, and she is one of our shovers. And then we have Joe Plasky, seven years. He's with our Facilities Team. And you see Joe a lot in the evening. He's great with our our employees and, not our employees, but our guests of the building and trying to get meeting rooms set up. Sheng Yu Chang, two years, Support Services, and he is one of our supervisors in the Support Services Department. Taylor Price is celebrating one year, and she's with Information Services, and she is one of our programming assistants, helping with youth and teen. And then Vera Wexler, she's celebrating one year. She's with Information Services, and she is one of our Sunday librarians. So congratulations to all of them for those June, June anniversaries. Following is the parking lot closure information that I gave you. Thank you again for last month and the approval based on weather for us to close tomorrow. We're closed to the public. I do have staff coming to the building and working. It did allow for some staff, if they didn't want to work, to use benefit time and take an extra day off. But I do have, I do have a good amount of staff that will be coming into work tomorrow and getting some things done and catching up without the public. It's a, it's a nice break. But it also keeps tar and some crazy stuff coming into the building. And with with the teens and the school still in session, I really appreciate that extra day. It also allows us to be ready. Based on weather, we can open on Monday the the parking lot to be used for the Memorial Day Parade and the run that's happening at eight AM, so that our parking lot will be available by that time by using the Friday. It will be resurfaced and restripped, so it should look brand-new and and beautiful for summer. Then I, on page thirty-one, we had a wonderful launch to our new catalog and reg, our, sorry, our new calendar and registration system. Huge thank you to Dana Van Oost, who is our Communications Manager, Amy Crockett, who's also with her team, and we have a committee that chose this product. This is a new product that allows for easier events, planning, meeting room coordinating and and registering eventually. Coming this summer sometime, people will be able to actually queue in and reserve rooms and then get approval through our admin department, so it's it's more customer service friendly. So very excited about that, that launch. Lot of committee work has been happening, and so I want to call out page thirty-one so that you can see a lot of employees that have been involved in some big committees over the last months and even a year. HR has been working for a couple of years to get us, you know, to where we are. We'll be bringing you an HR manual to review and and get approval on, coming very soon. Strategic planning, I wanted to call out that. Customer service, another big committee that has been working very hard, which then goes into, I didn't put it in the packet, but it will be available for public. You saw the Secret Shopper report, but I gave you the summary that was in your packet. And I'm, I'm so proud of the work. There, yes, there are things in there to bring our attention to that we can, we can improve on. There's always room for improvement. But if you read through this, this really talked about how great the library employees are doing with customer service. And so I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone on that team. I have just under seventy employees that are working very hard to do the best they can and give the best service, and I know they try every day to do that. And I think this is a testament. I did not know this Secret Shopper. I want to put that out there. I did not know the person. I worked with a company to bring the shopper in. So no one knew who this person was and when this person came through our building. So it was, I think, a true test, you know, and and sample of what, and they, they looked at many different areas of our customer service and how we provide it. So again, I think the Novi team and all of the employees need a shout-out for how fantastic they are, because this is, this is true information telling you how well they're doing. So any questions just to that report?
Julie, I was wondering, where, where most of the, everything that was in the, in the booklet here, was it within the building? Did they do anything with outreach?
They did. They did outreach, the NPL at your door. That was, that was part of it. Programming is considered outreach.
So like the reading groups, I mean, the book clubs?
They didn't do that, because someone would have had to have come in and they would have, based on the book club.
Oh, I see.
They know the people. You know, it's usually, it's, it's regulars, so that would have looked a little odd to do that.
But it was great. I mean, staff can be very proud. I mean, I hope that they
Yes.
got a chance to look through all of this.
They did. We shared it.
I love Secret Shopper kind of things. I mean,
We haven't done this in almost fourteen years.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And so what, what this does, this will drive, not only with the strategic plan, it will drive a new customer service plan and model that the committee will work on. They will, you know, come up with scenarios and how to address them and stuff. So this is, this is some really great, hard work that's, that's still going to happen with this committee, but I, I just think you're, you're seeing it, it's in writing, you're seeing what we're hearing.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, going through that report, just reaffirmed all the hard work and wonderful service that the staff does every single day. And it was just so nice to see that measurement there. So just a couple of things. One of the things that they suggested as an opportunity for improvement was figuring out how to make the appointments a little bit easier for iQub.
We're already on it.
Okay, because I was wondering if our new software was going to be able to help with that. I wasn't sure.
I, I don't yet, know yet.
Okay.
But I know that they're going to look into it. And then there was also something about having a hard time getting a hold of iQub, you know, connecting as well.
Yeah.
So there's a couple of things there that we're, we're going to be looking into. The committee is already aware of it. Staff has already seen this information.
Okay.
So, yes, no, I appreciate you bringing that up, because we'll look at what works best.
Yeah.
We're even looking at, you know, some hours and 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 maybe changing some hours, extending some hours, things like that
Yeah.
to make it more feasible for, you know, touching base with people who use the space.
Cool.
But nope, it's a great point out from that report.
Yeah, I just, I just figured, because we talked about the meeting room software, and I'm like, maybe there's a delta with it. I don't know.
We, we used, we used software a while back. It, it was called Pick Time, which we used when we were in COVID,
Oh.
where people could pick up materials. That didn't, it, it worked, but it didn't work great.
Yeah.
And so I think the committee wants to still, still look into and see what, what's out there.
Okay.
So more to come, because again, overall, I, I couldn't have been more pleased.
It's amazing.
I actually enjoyed reading it. And I, I would like to point out Lindsay Gochai, she was the Chair of the Committee, a wonderful group. You've, you've got all the names, but I, I would like to call her out for the fact that, you know, she's been leading this and meeting with the consultant that we've been working with, so then she drives the meeting to get everybody involved. And, and this committee has been wonderful, because they truly are, all of them are contributing in subway. You know, they're providing feedback and information, and, and I think it's going to be a great, you'll see it eventually, but I think it'll be a great plan to use as we introduce new staff, as we work with staff, you know, as we point out things for improvement or just continuing to cheer on what's going on for the organization.
Do you think a, a Secret Shopper is something you want to institute, like every several years or so?
I do think it's worth it.
Okay.
I really do. Every few years or so to, to just have that point of reference for that feedback. I, and it's outside, again, I appreciate once in a while having that outside look of ears and eyes
Yeah.
for the organization. Great.
Tell the committee this was awesome.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it, because they, they did a lot of wonderful work. So I felt you all needed to see it. I, I think it's important, and again, it will be on display and in our packet if anyone ever wanted to look at the information. We have a donation drive that goes through the end of May. Just wanted to point that out to you. There's a box in our lobby if you want to donate. And then page thirty-four and thirty-five, mark your calendars, and thirty-six, I'm queuing you up for all kinds of great events to be at. I, I get a lot of attendance from all of you when it comes to the Song Fest and the Tune Fest, so please plan to be at some events this summer so that you can have some fun with us. A huge shout-out to Paradise Park for the Summer Song Fest. They have a beautiful venue that allows us to have these events, rain or shine, which I love. And they also, you know, have a, a nice bar if you would like a cocktail or a refreshment, and they even incorporate food. So it's just a great way to have some fun in the summer, connect with the library, but also add another business. And it's a shout-out also to our friends at the library, because without them, that's who supports the music, and there's a lot of new entertainment coming. Gail has put together some great new entertainment coming throughout the summer, so we are going to have lots of fun and dancing and singing. And then I included on thirty-seven and thirty-eight, just a snippet of the programming that's coming for youth. Our, our brochures, you all got your brochure, your summer reading brochure, so you got to see the colorful brochure that's going to go to all the schools. Yep, thank you. Thank you, trustee Dooley. Those are going to all, those will hit all of the schools next week after the holiday. So every student gets one in their hand when it comes to the elementary school, and then when we, we work with our teens. But this is design work done by Dana Van Oost and our committee to put together, you know, this, the summer plan, and very excited to be having this. This is our biggest event of the year. Everyone should be reading. This is the time to read when you can have fun reading, because you don't, you're not told you have to read something. You're actually reading things by choice, hopefully. Maybe some students have some reading materials that they have to follow this summer, but for the most, for the most part, it should be fun reading all summer. So, and I hope that you all get a chance to enjoy it and be part of the program as well. You do, you do earn prizes, and we want you to have fun. So any other questions? I know that I have reports from all of my departments provided, as well as the Friends and the Historical Commission. There is also their information and our statistics. I do want to point out to you really quickly on page, which you'll see in notation next month, but if you look at page fifty-four, we have a couple under, under the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year for library usage. Some of the library, sorry, some of the lobby numbers, we had to tweak. They did not get divided appropriately. I will make sure that you get the, the updated version in the next board meeting packet. So we had a couple of months that got missed by mistake. I think trustee Havangis, you had asked about some larger numbers, and there were, there were a couple of months that did not get divided by two, because it shows our, we do track the numbers in and out and divided, and a couple of those did not get that. So they were higher than they should have been.
Okay.
Yep. But that's the only thing to report at this time, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
In regard to the usage, so, but in the last couple of months, we've had an average daily usage of like eighteen eighty-three for March and two thousand one hundred and five for April, which is significantly up.
So if you look at page fifty-four,
Yep.
if you're looking at the lobby, if you look at March, that forty-nine thousand, that should be divided in half. Yes. That was, that was the larger number.
Is that true for March and April?
It is true for March, April, and I believe September. So those are the three numbers I think that will get adjusted. Our IT department had Jeff Smith is looking into it, and I'll have the updates.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So, so the
It's not all of them. It's just a few.
Okay, okay, okay. And then something else that for a non-computer techie, in regard to the early literacy workstation usage?
Yes, which page are you on?
Ah, fifty-six.
Okay. One second.
There, there is a footnote there that, that's starting, I guess, in December of twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
We're not using the AWE customer portal, but we're using two public AWE workstations.
Yes.
What are the difference? I, I don't know.
These are, AWE is called AAW, and these are actual early literacy. They're specific with games on them. They're game-loaded type computers for youth, for young people to use.
Okay.
So the numbers are, they no longer support the software, and we're looking at what we might be providing in the future. But for now, these are guesstimated numbers of, of the usage that's happening by the young children that are in the building.
But what's, what, what's a work, what's the difference between workstation and a portal?
Oh, let me see. Portal is not, so the portal itself is what, what
Tied into a computer, something like that?
No, it's what gives us the, the statistics.
Okay, okay.
So it's, it's us talking and getting the right statistics from it.
Okay.
It's nothing having to do with the, the actual computers itself. They're, they're usable, and the kids can use it. It's just getting our information.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
I didn't understand. Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Julie?
Yes.
So for our electronic resources, like Hoopla and Overdrive, I've actually been kind of watching the discourse from libraries all over the country.
Yes.
Talk, because we've talked about it for budgets, just how expensive it is to license these resources, but we have to have them, because you can see the statistics, they just keep going up. So the conference that you guys went to, did they talk about that at all? Or is there anything that you want to share, like with regards to libraries talking with these organizations to get the pricing to be more fair?
What's going to have to happen is, it's not going to happen just on an individual level.
Right.
And so, which, as a, as a whole, libraries are trying to rally to say to them as a, as a bigger organization, you've got to work with us. There's been legislation, you know, there's, there's been some of that that has been asking them to consider those changes. That hasn't happened yet, however, it continues. We keep pushing. So I can tell you that the fight is still there. It is. And, and we work hard. We continue to do it, just like we do with advocating, you know, at, at a state level. We're doing it with these vendors as well. I haven't had any further information as to how it affects us. We're still getting really good pricing, because we do it from consortium, and that's the best way for us to do it. So our consortium is also tackling that with those vendors as well. But we are, like I said, still getting the best because of the consortium that we have.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, this would be another opportunity for public comment, if there was anybody in the audience, but I see nobody in the audience, so we're going to move on to committee reports. At this time, if you have, I'll ask the Chair of the committee to, if they have a report or they want to make a report, that's not something that's covered in our Library Board Action later on. No obligation to, but if you want to hear something from a committee, you may. I guess not. Moving through that section very quickly. Matters for Library Board Action. Item A on page sixty-eight, changes to the policy's policy.
Don't you love that? Don't you love that?
Yes.
Changes to the policy's policy.
Yes.
So these are, just to cue you up, usually I would bring these to the policy committee, but they're so minor, I just thought I would bring them literally to the full board. If you, if you see for, um, page sixty-eight, we reviewed it, there's no changes. It's keeping this policy and updating it to May twenty-third of twenty twenty-four. That's the only thing, is that you're recognizing it and that it should be a policy. We actually do need this because if someone is, um, questioning something, we want to be able to explain to them how do policies get put in place and who's responsible for making those decisions. So we, at first I thought, maybe we don't need this, but the truth is it, it holds some accountability to the library board. So that is the first policy of changes to policies.
My, my question in regard to that was, um, does it go to the policy committee? And kind of the, 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 the order, it says like the library director will direct it to the board?
Mm-hmm. And usually what I do is I direct it through committee first.
Okay.
But it eventually, no matter what. It's going to come to you because as a full board, you make those decisions. Nothing is decided in, in committee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion so we can discuss it if we want to discuss it.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and approved. Um, any comments or questions or discussion in regard to the changes to the policy?
I have a couple of little things.
Sure.
Um, on page seventy-one, it's highlighted and, um, has a strike through for purposes, scope, and objectives. Does that mean that heading is not going to be there or it is going to be there or?
It is, but can we take by policy?
You, you may be ahead, where I was just looking at the...
Yeah, we're only on...
We're just... Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were doing it as a group, I apologize.
We're, we're doing one, one by one unless it becomes so simple, we do them all. But at this point, I was just doing the one.
Okay, sorry.
And I haven't...
Jumping the gun, okay. Jumping the gun, sorry.
No, 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 sometimes they go so quick, it's better to take them as a group. And so far, we'll do it one by one, okay. Any comments on the changes to the policy's policy? If not, um, will the secretary call the vote?
Um, Trustee Dooley, I say aye. Trustee Havelengas?
Aye.
Trustee Sturri?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Second, um, board action, uh, policy, which is on page sixty-nine, um, which recommendations for the board to remove? And I'll be honest, I didn't quite understand, we are eliminating those definitions?
We are, so literally, it's a policy of definitions. I don't think we need a policy of definitions. We can always put in definitions to go with your policy manual, but I don't think it needs to be a policy because I would not want to then add a word or add, uh, well, add a word and then a definition and have to come back each time. I'd rather work with just language that would help identify policies and not have it as a policy. Does that make sense?
Now, I understand.
Yes.
Because to me, those look like definitions that would be included within whatever policy we had.
Yes.
And not a policy of definitions.
Correct, or an index that we can use to help define the, the policy and, and some of the language.
So this is to delete this policy?
Yes, we're trying to clean things up.
Okay, cool, 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 cool. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Oh, go ahead. Who said so moved?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Um, any, any discussion in regard to deleting these definitions as a policy? If not, I'll, would you call the vote?
Uh, Trustee Havelengas?
Aye.
Trustee Sturri?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
And Trustee Dooley, I say aye. Motion carries six zero.
Maybe we could have taken these as a group. Uh, item C, emergency closing policy.
So very small...
On page seventy.
Yeah, very small edits, as you can see, anything in red is what we're recommending just to add. And that's to call out, um, our library network, um, the website and social media, just to put a little more definition of how we would alert and bring information to the community.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Support.
Support. Any discussion on the emergency closing policy?
Um, just real quick, do we want to include our app too or no?
I, I think I would just leave it social media, you know, kind of under that.
That kind of falls in there.
Yeah, under that umbrella.
Okay, perfect.
Secretary George Caldwell?
Yes. Trustee Sturri?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Havelengas?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Item D, the financial policy on page, um, seventy-one to seventy-four. A few more red marks here.
Lot of red on that one, lot of work here. And Mark and Brian, go for it.
Move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion in regard to, or the motion's been approved and seconded, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, just some clarification of what the, um, the group did. Uh, first, the mission statement is kind of repetitive, um, putting it here. It was here in the, this is the old mission statement. It doesn't make sense to put it here and then elsewhere. Uh, at the same time, we, we highlighted the role that the city plays in the finance group. Uh, and then we also decided to add in on page seventy-three, there's some rather lengthy discussions on how, on the limits of our contracts, what has to go out for bid and so forth. This is an exact copy from the city. The old policy basically said, yeah, we, we refer to the city's numbers, but we felt that this was, um, important to repeat it here, both for, for our staff to be able to look at it, make a decision, for the public to see it if they just get our policies rather than saying, go look at now at the city policy, and for other board members as they come on board, what are our limits? So we chose to put that back in. Other than that, there's just minor edits in the policy, so.
And for Trustee Havelengas, you are correct. The yellow is just to remove the purpose scope. It, it was in there as a title, and I'm removing it just because we've tried to remove a purpose of a policy and get right to the crux of the policy.
Okay.
So just removing that title.
Okay. Then, sorry to play grammar police again.
Oh, yes, go for it.
Sorry, these little, little typo, I think, are just, uh, on page seventy-two, when you add the and staff, the is needs to be plural to are. The verb there.
Oh, yes.
Yes, very top line. Now that you're adding more than one thing, they are committed to evaluating.
Thank you.
So, sorry, I know it's...
No.
Old, old habits.
We appreciate...
We appreciate it. I appreciate that, that change.
Yes, thank you.
I really appreciate all these ads. I, I was wondering why they weren't there to begin with, so your explanation really makes sense. You know, it seems sort of like why wasn't this year before, but that makes sense, so, yeah.
It will require, you know, we, we do review this policy. When the city makes a change though.
Right.
That's one of the reasons it wasn't in there, but it's just for, for utilitarian purposes, it just made sense.
Yep.
It's also very helpful to me with my staff. I have a number of staff that are working with me on budgets and, you know, having to follow those guidelines. And so if they have something there, instead of having to refer to the city, we've got it right in our own documents.
Right, yeah.
Do you need to do anything with the motion because of the R?
Um, I, I think I'll try to cover that.
Yes.
Um, any other comments?
I do have a question on the capital purchases, and we had this conversation, and you said it requires prior, prior approval of the library director. When does it come through us?
It would anyways, I'd have to. So, um, so all capital purchases, they actually get approved through budget only.
Right.
So you're already approving, and then they come through me.
Okay.
So I'm bringing them to you, you approve them, and then they work through me in order to, um, you know, be executed. And it's only during budget time that capital would come up. Or I come to you with something, it would have to be approved in order for it to even go and be executed again. Capital is, um, be, capital is that twenty-five thousand or more, and anything large like that is going to have to come to the board. For the most part.
Okay.
And it's all done through budget.
Any other discussion?
It's a great que- it's a great question.
Okay. Um, then I, I would ask that the secretary call the vote on this, uh, financial policy with the understanding that we agree to grammatically change the is, uh, to, um, are on the top of page seventy-two, line one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Bartlett?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Havelengas?
Aye.
And Trustee Sturri?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Next item is on page seventy-five through seventy-six, it's information and reference service policy.
See, the only thing that's, um, coming forward to you is that what's in red with the strikeout is repetitive, um, up from the, the paragraph above. We just found that it was, um, a repeat of the same type of language. Um, and then on seventy-six, we've identified, you know, a couple of areas where, um, providing recommendations, financial, political, religious advice, we wanted to call those out. You know, that, that's not our wheelhouse, we try for information, but not to, you know, be very careful with how we give that information out. Um, you'll, uh, let's see, and then creating, we want to be very careful about the last one. The last bullet point is very important, and I, I, I need to stress this all to you because we actually get asked.
Wow.
Which is a little scary that someone would literally be comfortable enough to give our librarians. They trust our staff, which is fabulous. But they're okay sometimes with literally giving passwords and personal information. And my staff wants to be able to have something written that says, I'm so sorry, but I really can't take that information from you, or I can't go into an account for you. I, I can help you get there, but I can't actually do that. And it's because we want to be safe on our end and also be safe for the, the patron. So calling that out because it's actually been asked of way more than we've ever thought it would. And with the security these days, we want to be very careful with that.
And when I introduced the motion, I think I misspoke. It's on pages seventy-five and seventy-six. I think I said seventy-one to seventy-four, but it's on page of seventy-five to seventy-six.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion in regard to the information and reference service policy? If not, I'll ask the secretary to call the vote.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Havelengas?
Aye.
Trustee Sturri?
Aye.
Trustee Bartlett?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Item F in matters for library board actions, to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five salary, uh, recognizing the change from two percent to four percent for the salary ranges by grade, uh, based on suggestions from our labor attorney review effective July one, two thousand twenty-four. It's on page seventy-eight. I mean, ba- basically, with the salary that we approved, our ranges were only at a two percent level, which had to, which recommended to move up to a four percent level to make the ranges consistent with the action that we're taking.
Correct, yep. So it's just a change, it does not change anything financially with what you've already approved with budget. It's just making the structure work with what those percentages are going to be given in July. So you're going from the red, I'm sorry, from the blue to the red. That's the change, which is another two, two percent that it went up, just so that we have our ranges in, in, um, in place. And it also calls out too, the concern for someone who might be at the maximum and near there because we're giving that four percent increase this year. If someone were to be near that, you'd be still staying in range and not going out of range. That's, that's the only thing that was recommended by our attorney.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to support.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, I'll ask the secretary to call the vote.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Havelengas?
Aye.
Trustee Sturri?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Aye.
Trustee Burke? Motion carries six zero.
Um, I will just, uh, call your attention to the communication that we received in regard to the Mental Health Alliance Book Discussion, very complimentary, thank you. It's on page eighty, I won't read the whole thing, but it was a, a nice shout out, thank you for doing that.
Before we adjourn, if I can, um, just give you a couple of things. Um, you will see the closings for two thousand twenty-five in your June packet. We're, I'll be bringing those for matters for board action for next, next month. And, um, there will be a closed session next month for director's review. So just giving you a heads up.
Didn't we just do that?
You did my mid, mid year.
Yeah, so...
So, do you want to talk to that a little bit?
Yes.
Uh, time flies.
So, yes. So expect from me this weekend, a communication, um, for you to have all those forms ahead of time.